Like to call this the end of town council meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the votes?
Mr. Allen? Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. France?
Here.
Oh, wait. Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
Mrs. Deppi? Seven here to Addison.
Thank you. At this time, any resident and property owners wish to speak before the town council? Committee, commission, and board reports, Mr. Cherry.
Good evening, Mike Cherry, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I asked to be able to speak to you tonight. We have a guest speaker tomorrow in our Planning and Zoning meeting. Dave Finks coming down from Partnership for Strong Communities. We asked Dave to come and address us on a couple of issues that were left over from the regulation rewrite. We looked at incentive housing zones under the Home Connecticut banner before, and we struggled with how to reach the density numbers Home Connecticut would require to gain the stipend back to the municipality when we're short on infrastructure. So, we've asked Dave to come down and talk to us on how do other communities that are just as short on infrastructure meet those density requirements? Because there's a real need for the housing, and if we can get some offset from the state to help us get the design work and the regulations finally passed, that would make a tremendous difference. Even in today's economy where home prices aren't what they used to be, wages aren't what they used to be either, and that delta still exists for mixed income and affordable workforce housing. So, Dave's going to come down and talk to us about that, and give us a brief overview of what the reinstatement of Home Connecticut will do for us. Our objectives for this year are to get our affordable housing strategy attached to the Plan of Conservation and Development, and take a hard look at overlay-type zones for affordable housing. East Line has a set of affordable housing regulations that have through probably not what they had wished, but vetted pretty well through the courts, and we don't have any such regulations in our zoning or subdivision areas. And having a set that somebody could go use rather than writing their own, I think would be a benefit to the community. So, we're hoping to engage Partnership for Strong Communities and maybe get some of their help from their advocacy and funding they get from other sources. Thank you.
Could I ask, Mike, while you're on stage, it's been how long now since we've combined planning and zoning?
October 18th of last year.
Any comments, or, I mean, how's it going?
I think it's going well. My concern early on was most of the membership of the Combined Planning and Zoning Commission, most of the people who stepped forward were from the planning. They've adapted to their roles well. They're open-minded. They listen, and they make what I consider to be informed decisions based on the information presented to them. So, I'm biased, but fairly happy. I think it's gone well.
Good, thank you. Comments of town councils? Any comments from any of us? Wow, well, then I have to go with my... This week, old friend George Dieter passed away.
He did?
He did. George, for those that don't know him, was a longtime, longtime volunteer in town, instrumental in the Ledger Senior Center, building of the Ledger Senior Center, and so we certainly send to his family our condolences from the town council. One other item, I've just become the ultimate fan of the farmers market, and I just think it's such a fabulous place. Invite everybody that's listening in to wander over there when they can between 3:30 and 6:30 on Wednesday evenings. As the season progresses, it'll get more and more booths, but it's certainly a fun place and lots of good food. And then, just one other comment I would like to make, and I always like to give, Bill or I always like to give, a forum report, Ledger Facebook forum report, and there was a huge discussion, I invite anybody that's on Facebook to read, about what they want in Ledger Center. And the number-one thing that everybody wants, any ideas?
Dairy Queen. Dunkin' Donuts.
Dairy Queen. Dunkin' Donuts. Now, the other thing about the discussion, it started with the typical, "We want this big thing and this big thing," but then as the discussion progressed, "We don't want to mess up Ledger Center by putting big stores. Let's just continue what's going on down in Galesbury with the CBS, et cetera, and let's keep Ledger Center more of a village atmosphere." Except for the Dunkin' Donuts. Still want the Dunkin' Donuts.
And we want it now.
Want it right now, yes.
Madam Chair, I was thinking about that this evening. Just an idea, and the reason that I knew the answer to that is because so much time on EDC with Kevin and working on that, but just an idea, and I don't know if the Valentina's folks would go for it, but there's an open store over there.
Not anymore.
The other side's not open anymore?
No, it's locked. It's locked. As of...
Well, then I withdraw that. I still have to go.
So, all that thinking for nothing.
I got a tear-a-machine, all right? Please. Just find yourself a machine.
Apparently, there's an entire forum of people that agree with me.
Okay. Minutes, could I have a motion to approve the three minutes?
So moved. Set.
Motion's been made and seconded.
I think I will have to stay from June 5th minutes.
Okay, then, the motioners do the first two, please. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, so, Roxanne, we're moving the first two sets of minutes.
Okay, Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
That's a six in favor, one in the center.
Motion carries. Motion for the next set.
I'll move on. Save.
Motion made and seconded. Any corrections? Roxanne?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Next.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Six in favor, one in the center.
Motion carries. You have the communications list. Don't see any referrals. Council Subcommittee Liaison Reports, Admin, Mr. Eichelberg.
This evening, the Administration Committee reviewed the Ledger Police Officer Job Description. We had some comments back to HR, and he's going to include those and bring it to us. So, we're not going to act on it later tonight, but we did get it finalized. And as far as, we have an appointment tonight, and that'll be on our agenda later, but other than that, that's what we did.
Any questions for Admin? Community Services.
We have that.
Any questions for Community Services? Finance, Mr. France.
Finance Committee met last Wednesday, 5th, and all the items that were brought forward tonight, except for one, that was dealt with by a special meeting last week, the Up Town Sawmill contract for the repairs being done, was passed out of the Finance Committee. We have a special town council meeting immediately following that so that we can get the work going and not delay any further support, the opening of the Sawmill.
Any questions for Finance? Information Technology, Mr. Soms.
Information Technology did meet on Tuesday, June 4th. The Chair was unable to attend due to traffic, not in Ledger, but Councilors Dabrowski and Eichelberg held the meeting as scheduled. The MIS Director was also unable to attend, but she sent a report in advance, and the committee noted that the land-use kiosk is now being used by applicants, and the next steps are to add approvers to the permit process, as well as electronic field inspections and reports. I think that's a great step forward. The MIS Director also reported the implementation of wireless access is complete in the entire Emergency Services Building. Virtual servers are now up and running in the MIS office with failover. And server virtualization saves the town money because it allows multiple applications to run on one server, so we don't have to buy maintenance and servers. Also saves power costs and space. They're also preparing redundant exchange email server for the Emergency Operations Center as a result of learning from past storms. There's also an automatic trouble ticketing system in place for all town employees, so if they're having trouble with their computer, rather than call, they can just fill out a little email report which says what's happening, and then they can prioritize and track and report on how many things are being fixed. Also, Mr. Bruce Edwards provided an update regarding the production of the recycling video. He has produced a press release, which I'll be reading momentarily, to be posted on Ledger Patch and the Ledger Facebook page. He's also, with his school, signed up two LHS students to assist on production, and is now working to interview an environmental professor at BuCon, as well as other professionals that will give short, educated support for our efforts. Script and storyboard ideas are in development. He's getting ready to start some of the shooting and creation of the animation. The press release goes as follows. "We are looking for Ledger actors and locations. The idea of recycling is not new, but many of the processes are, and overall, the benefits are countless. The town of Ledger has engaged Bruce Edwards of TRV Media to produce and direct a video that will illustrate methods and reasons for recycling to residents and small businesses. Funding for the program is provided by the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Re-Authority. Though centered in Ledger, the program will be made available to other communities in Doolittle County to broaden the understanding of how best to recycle and some very good reasons to do so. So, we're seeking Ledger volunteers to provide home and small business locations for some of the footage, and also some volunteers to be on camera as part of the demonstrations. In particular, TRV is considering volunteer applicants for an on-camera host and/or voiceover position, so please do not feel that you have to be a practiced actor to get involved. We'll also utilize volunteer production assistance, so if you're into lights, sound, cameras, and dragging equipment around, please contact us. Bruce is currently working on research, storyboard script, and location determinations. This will be a professionally-produced, fun, informative, and practical production that will make the market providing better future for us all. If you'd like to contribute your time and energy to this production, this is a long email, so I'm going to suggest that people contact the town council or the mayor's office and just say that you want to participate in the recycled video. And Mr. Edwards will select the participants and locations based on the needs of the collection. I want to thank you all three members. This may be important."
I'd like to volunteer, Mr. Dabrowski.
No, don't do that.
Say it.
I see some fine volunteers out there. At this time, Roxanne, would you mind giving a bit of a report? I know you've been doing the IQM2 training this past week or so. Could you fill us in on how that's going and where we are?
Sure. Yeah, I've been working with the mayor's office, and we set up four different training sessions for the month of June. They're going to be every Tuesday morning, so we've already had two this month, and we've had updated training on legislative files. The Agenda Wizard, the Minute Maker, and, well, that's going to be on June 18th, and on June 25th, we'll be doing the document import. And this is basically as a follow-up to the one-on-one training I've already given to a lot of the departments on IQM2. I've worked with many individuals, one-on-one staff, as well as volunteers. So, now that everyone's been using it for about a year, and they've got their feet wet, and they're finding little glitches along the way, or little issues that they're having, this is providing some overview, and we're also providing a comprehensive step-by-step, you know, go-to-file, click-on-this type of thing. And I think they've been fairly well attended. We had 30 people attending the first session on June 4th. We had two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. That was on legislative files. For the Agenda Wizard, not everyone needs to know that, as we do the legislative file, mostly all the departments need to know, or the state files. So, we had probably about 22 people there, along with staff members and some volunteers, and that worked out well. A lot of the volunteers, after the training, came up and said how helpful it was. And I think the mayor might want to chime in. He said that IQM2 is the buzz around town hall this week.
Wait a minute, I thought it was lunch.
But, so I think it's going pretty well, and we've got two more sessions to go, and I think it's been helpful.
Good. And I was at the senior luncheon today, and even seniors, which is not about it, Lauren mentioned that they have a senior that's really good in technology, and they're going to have him help them with IQM2. So, it's good to see everybody coming on board. Any questions?
Just one other note, I was talking with IQM2 just the other day, and the gentleman said that we're one of their star towns.
Not surprising with you with the helm, you know.
Yeah, because he said, you know, oftentimes when people call and say, "This isn't working," or whatever, he pulls the bars and he shows them how we're spot-on, you know? You go to the place on the meeting, whatever item it's talking to, it goes to that place in the video. Unfortunately, it's not going to do that tonight because we can't do that. We will upgrade it tomorrow.
Very good. Any questions? And again, we all commend you for your efforts. Okay, let's see. Land Use Public Works, oh, you already did. Did you already give that?
I did, I did.
Kevin, oh, Kevin, I'm sorry. Land Use Public Work?
We met last week. Committee discussed with Public Works Directors, Madala, and Nation that we had gathered to date regarding proposed signs and locations, potential legal issues, and right-of-way limitations for places, awareness signs. We also had discussion with Steve Maslow and the resident and land upon the current condition of the installed beaver deceivers on the Land Town Road. What efforts could be done, either improve the existing installation or replace, provide best results. Further discussion to be continued with Steve Maslow and the residents, with the members of Land Use, if they're available, to show up and dwell. Committee also reviewed a proposed order, change to ordinance 118 for citation of zoning for the addition of the wetland violations. We've occurred with the wording, and it's going back to IWD and UBC to go through the formal process of going through the approvals.
Any questions? Thank you. Board of Education, Fred is not here. He did provide a written report.
It was attached.
It was attached, and probably the highlight would be that they are continuing to work on their long-term facilities plan. Mike and I were both at the Building Committee meeting where they reported that they had the path going forward would be Phase 1 to renovate. The Ledger Middle School was new and at the sixth-grade wing, and then Phase 2 would be to develop two learning centers for K through 5, one in Galesbury, one in Ledger, and then on to Phase 3, which is many years down the road, renovate Julia Long. Phase 4, renovate Ledger High School, but those are well into the future. So, I know the Board of Ed is meeting Thursday night, and they will come back to us with a more specific plan in terms of moving forward. Any questions? WPCA, they're going to...
There was a meeting, but I was unable to...
I wanted to.
You went?
I had. The items that we were discussing was the proposed rate changes and accept their public hearing for 7:00 p.m. here on the 20th, June 2, for the public hearing for the rate change.
I only mention this just because I remember the last public hearing on the rate change. We did it at the high school.
Yeah.
That's what was talked about, but you'd have to talk to the Chair because that's less than a week away, and I haven't seen any notices anywhere.
It was discussed at the meeting lots ahead of the public hearing, June 20.
Yeah, but...
It took me at the library, I mean, at the high school.
Yeah.
The only reason I mention it is the one public hearing I attended on the rate change was, the high school was pretty, I don't want to say it was filled, because it wasn't, but certainly more people than would fit in this room. So, just pass that along. Although, they were looking at a 30% increase, so that could have had something to do with...
They were not now.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Any other liaison reports? Maybe one for the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just to follow up on the IQM2 training, I commend Roxanne for the work she's doing. I think this, even though it's been well over a year and a half since we've begun using it, I think getting a lot of the town hall staff and members of commissions, volunteers in one room and kind of, you know, sharing their experiences has been a big help, and as I've gone through and seen, as Roxanne has said, people are getting into it. We kind of slacked off a little bit. I know I had said December of 2012 as the full implementation date, but, you know, some of the volunteer committees, the non-regulatory committees have kind of taken, you know, been a little bit slower coming on board. I think now we're starting to see some real movement there, and I'm setting some new goals of having every committee or any commission on there regardless of what their particular function they did. I attended along with HR Assistant Don Steinhoff, Marcia Hancock, our Finance Director, and Charles Watson, one of the members of Pension Board, a FIA conference, Financial Investment Advisors. There was much discussion at that conference in the main session and in some of the side sessions about direct contribution plans, pension plans, and obviously, it's more prevalent in the private sector. But one of the things that I'm beginning to realize more and more, and I'm working with the Pension Board, is the issue of education, first of all, because for municipal workers, this is something new, and it's our obligation to make sure that they are educated in what our obligation is and what their obligation is. You know, one of the advantages, you could say, of a direct contribution plan is that it forces you to be more involved in the decisions that are made. But one of the things that I also see that's very necessary, and again, it's very common in the private sector, is auto-enrollment of new employees, and there are various ways that they indicate that can be implemented, and auto-increases every year. For example, they said, you know, employees should be automatically enrolled at 3%, and then increased every year until they reach 15%. They also gave statistics, I know it's a little hard to believe, several people were rather skeptical, including myself, that where they do this and where they set those targets, people tend to comply, whereas if you say to somebody, "Hey, we'd really like you to sign up," and, you know, 3% would probably be okay, that, you know, people are going to lower their expectations and either say no or say, "Well, I don't want to do anything like that." So, you know, they mentioned, you know, raising the target and getting people to along with that. So, that's something that I think we need to look at. I'm in the process of preparing a revised Department Head Resolution. I think that's a good place to start. We do have a number of department heads and non-union salaried employees in the town who are in the plan, but I think we need to begin with them to start looking at this type of process. I met with Board of Education Board Member Bob Beaver this week. We had had, if you remember, a year ago, we had a discussion with our health care advisor about health savings accounts and HSA plans, and I had told Bob, "Yeah, when I get, Nick, last year's budget set, you know, come back and remind me." Well, he gave me a little more time, but he did remind me. We did have a very good conversation. We spoke with East Line. East Line has implemented this, both for their department heads, salaried individuals, and they have options, and everyone has their agreed contracts with us. What I'm proposing is that we establish an ad hoc committee. I'm proposing that it be composed of the Finance Director, HR Representation, Board of Business Manager, and member of the Town Council in order to investigate this. Certainly, it has to be, it would have to be negotiated. I don't anticipate we're going to ever implement this across the board right now, but offering it as an option does have advantages, and there are employees who find these plans very attractive and might be very interested. And when you work through the numbers, there are advantages. I know we had trouble last year nailing down our advisor, but the numbers that are coming through, there's numbers like 20% savings on your health insurance. And there are ways that you can implement this to make it less painful for the employees. It's something that they did with East Line. Now that our budget is done and our state revenue estimates have been given, I'd like to, and I did contact him individually, but I would like to offer a public thanking to former State Representative Tom Reynolds. He worked tirelessly to establish pilot funds for reservation post-communities. It was not easy, and I know he was frustrated at times, but he did make that a reality. And this year, you know, when things looked really, really, you know, gloomy, we were talking with Monville about it because Monville recognized the funds just weren't there that we were promised, and in the end, those funds did come through according to that formula, and we're going to see those funds increase for the next three or four years. So, again, is it significant money? Well, I think it is, you know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year that we can see it increase. So, again, I thank Tom for his efforts there. We get calls, you know, between trash and what people consider to be blight, there's a good number of the calls we get in the office, and I just want to, we put it out there, but just so people understand, you know, this time of year when the grass grows quicker than, I don't know why, it grows quickly, and, you know, unmoored grass is not blight. But I will say this, you know, certainly, the town wants to make every effort to make our community as attractive as possible. If you see situations, and we know of situations in town where there are individuals who just cannot keep up with their property, you know, please let us know, you know, whether it be an illness or elderly person. We have volunteers in the town who probably would help out with that. You know, you only need to do it a few times a year, and it makes a big difference. There are also run site issues. We have one in the neighborhood here where there's a definite run of site issue that the police have identified, and in that case, you know, we can certainly send the town mower over there and just do a pass to just make it more safe in those areas. So, again, we definitely want to do things to make the town more attractive and to keep our neighborhoods looking as they should. Dispatch study, it has been a long time coming, but what I'm saying is that, you know, I'm more concerned about getting it right than I am getting it done quickly. I will say that the Subcommittee of the Public Safety Board has a draft report that they will be presenting to their committee next Tuesday in their meeting at 4:00, and maybe here in this room, because we may see a larger number of people than normally attend. And we're also, I'm beginning discussions, preliminary discussions, to indicate that whatever change we make in dispatch, our police force requires negotiations with the appropriate unions, and we're letting them know that this is something we need to start. And I've had some conversations with union representatives to let them know that, you know, we need to reach agreement because whether Dispatch stays here or goes someplace else, it is going to require something different than we currently have in our contract. And so, I think we've made that clear. There will be other discussions, and we will keep you informed. I would certainly invite you to attend that meeting at 4:00 next Tuesday. There have been concerns about Bittersweet Neighborhood because of the fact that the neighborhood's been cut through to Avery Hill Road and some of the traffic there, and there have been some complaints by residents there. We had some... We had some very interesting things happen there because, you know, I had, I had the police headquarters to their attention. And, you know, sometimes reality is different than what your perceptions. And we found by monitoring the traffic there and doing some actual traffic stops, that I'm concluding that, first of all, it may not be as bad as we think it is. Certainly we have evidence of that. And also, you know, be careful what you ask for in terms of traffic reinforcement. Are you seeing anything more about that? Finally, the police building. The building committee met last week and I will be, I'm working with them. There are some things that we can do upfront. We're looking to get a price to get the properties assessed, surveyed, so that Holdridge will have a good understanding of where the property lines are and we can begin discussions there. We're also working with other communities that have recently completed building projects, notably Monville, who has been very, very helpful in getting RFPs, specifications for architectural services. That's the next step that has to happen is to go to buy, to bid and hire an architect. And we've got several of them. Our planner, Charles Carnell, has been helpful in gathering some of these. Some of them are very, very detailed, but again, I think we can get some insights there. And I would hope to have an architect on board by the end of the summer, the latest, so that we can begin that work. And that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? Yes, Joe.
Mayor, just so I'm clear, so next Tuesday's Public Safety Meeting, the Subcommittee will make a recommendation that's supposed to do dispatch.
No, they will provide a report that will summarize the work that's done to date. The problem is that, obviously, pricing of the service, of the particular service among the three potential providers cannot be fully established until we determine our cost for our service. And it's not just picking the number out of the budget. We know there has to be changes to our service and the way it's staffed. And we have to determine, you know, what that's going to cost. And so there will not be a recommendation. There will certainly be some indication of some of the preferences, the pluses and the minuses. Each of the organizations has something to offer. Each of the three organizations has a weakness. We can't really deal with the other organizations until we deal with our own and say, okay, here's some of the weaknesses we have, we need to fix those, but there's a cost involved in that. And of course, until you determine what the cost of that is, it's hard to make a comparison at least on a cost basis on those three. How do I explain that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I know this has been addressed in other forums, but for the viewing audience tonight, can you just give us a rough schedule on breaking ground and completion for the police department?
This is, this is off the top of my head.
Very well, fine.
I would hope, the way I look at it is working backwards, that we would have a groundbreaking next spring. That would, you know, I think anything earlier than that, usually the architectural plans take, even if they took two or three months, you're going to be pretty close to beyond the construction season. Now again, maybe you could go, maybe go quicker than that, maybe there's some preliminary work that could be done before that. But I'm taking that as the worst-case condition and, you know, I think probably a one-year construction cycle is probably reasonable. So you're looking at spring of '15.
That sounds good.
Any other questions for the mayor? I had asked during the finance meetings, and I recalled that just now when dispatch was being discussed, I asked the question about why we couldn't move the, an ambulance to Gales Ferry. And it did cause a little bit of fuss, ruckus, I guess is a good word, at the time, and, but I was told not to worry, they're going to have a report. There's going to be a report. And about three different people told me that there was going to be a report. Do you have any, have you heard anything?
I seem to vaguely remember that and no, but I will say this, that we try to have monthly meetings with our emergency services, and I have one scheduled for tomorrow morning, so that would be a good time to bring that up and see who should take the lead on that. Because I agree, we've talked about it, we've argued about it, but I don't know that we've ever sat down on paper, you know. And until you do that, then you can look at it and say, well, what's really a valid point and what's not a valid point.
Okay, thank you. Old business, I believe that one is coming off the agenda, correct? Police officer.
We are not acting on that tonight.
Would anybody like to amend the agenda on your new business? Admin?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Stephen Whiffler, Republican of Nine Huntington Way, Ledger to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee as a temporary member for the Police Headquarters Facility project.
Second. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Finance, you have one important item.
The motion has set a mill rate of 28.2 for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
This budget process has been challenged, not so much from the expenses side, which is pretty straightforward, you know, both the Board of Ed and the mayor presenting their budgets, presented good budgets that held costs in line. Challenge has really been on the revenue side. For those that have been following, we've had anywhere from, I think the governor's proposal was about a quarter million dollar reduction in municipal aid. The Appropriations Committee piqued out about $880,000 reduction in municipal aid. And then there was a question of the mix of what the municipal aid looked like. And what I mean by that, in past years, we would have had revenue coming from the state that was unencumbered money. In other words, we could use it for any expense within the town, operating expenses, capital, whatever the town needed within their budget. This year, the state has instead bonded quite a bit of the money that is coming to the towns. And so if anybody who's got the loan for their house, you can't go use that money for going to buy a car, as an example. So many times that bonded money comes to the town with strikes or limitations on what you can use. Fortunately, within the last week, some of that bonded money had, covered money, like it comes with strings, has been taken out. And in the specific case, it was LoCIP, but they intended it was double the LoCIP funding, which would have come with limitations on what you could use that money for. And that is now actually basically traded off for pilot money, which doesn't have the same string. So overall, we are in good shape, though there will be some management, budget management, I won't call it really challenges, but it really is different from past years in how we're going to execute the budget. Overall, we're expecting, as of yesterday, about a $360,000 increase in municipal aid. Most of that is bonded, but the good news in that, that allows us to do additional capital projects potentially that we had not budgeted for with that money. Some of that money is increased on the education side. I guess the long explanation really is designed to let you know, some of the challenges on the state side that we were expecting did not materialize. Thankfully, legislators, I'm sure, were involved in much of that, and have essentially held the towns heartless in the budget challenge that they're facing at the state. So with all that, the increases of about .27 mils, or about 1% in the mill rate, easily covers our expenses and the challenge that we are expecting on the revenue side for the state did not materialize, so we're in good shape.
Any other questions or any questions I should ask? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I think motion to approve the following proposed projects to be eligible for tax credits under the Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credits. Installation of an automatic door opener at the Bill Library, and to upgrade the HVA system, and to convert the furnace from oil to gas at the Gales Ferry Library.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We have a public hearing earlier this evening on this. Essentially, the Neighborhood Assistance Act tax credit program is provided by the state to allow businesses to make contributions for projects, specific projects within the towns, and get tax credit from the state. It's really a win-win for the town, businesses provide the funding for some projects that probably would not be funded under the regular budget. And they also are really targeted at things that are efficiencies, such as heating systems. So it's really a great program.
Any questions, Mr. Saons?
So do we have businesses who have already provided some funding for these projects?
I do, I'm not aware of anybody who had, I believe we had to apply for grant for it to make the, got it. The deadline for that grant is 1st of July, which is why in June we got, come forward with it. So once we get a blessing in, so we put the program in place first and then, and one of the things that we had most recently was the conversion of the Gales Ferry Fire Department to natural gas was the last major project was done there. Very successful.
Great.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I think motion to grant a bid waiver for Beta Group Incorporated for up to $19,550 from account 21040107-54005, perform road surface management tasks in accordance with their proposal dated November 19th, 2012.
Second.
Discussion?
I see, what this is, is about three years ago, the Beta Group came in with a software package into inventory of our roads, which has been the basis for the $3.5 million bonded effort to essentially get our roads back, back up to where we want them to be, just kind of a shot in the arm for that. What we need to do now is have them go out and reassess based on all the work that has been done, validate the estimate that was presented three years ago. And this is the same company that did it three years ago and did a great job, so recommend forward.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call?
Typically, we have big discussions about bid waivers because we don't like to use them, but sometimes they make sense. And this is a case where we've got a project in process that exceeds the amount at which we have, we're required to go through a bid waiver. If we put it out to bid, it wouldn't make sense, and that's why we're putting this forward. So I'm going to go.
Right, the software that we used was this company. If we went with someone else, we'd be starting all over and it would be far more expensive.
Any other discussion questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Seven, seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I think motion to transfer funds, the amount of $11,074 obtained in the spreadsheet attached legislative file, 2183.
Second.
Discussion.
Since this is a interdepartmental management, it has to come to approval in order to balance out accounts across the town. Nothing significant as far as the transfers, it's just a matter of course, the accounts that are expected to be over expended and improving money.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Next item?
I think motion to adopt Connecticut State Library Historic Preservation Grant as follows. Resolve that John Rodaleekum, Mayor of Lengyers, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality, a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an historic documents preservation grant.
Second.
Discussion.
Since what this is, continuation with work for the town clerk is we need to take our grant, take our documents and make them accessible in the public as part of this grant. So it was really an excellent opportunity.
Any questions? I just, you mentioned.
Go ahead.
Accessible, how?
The plan, well, the plan was to digitize the documents as part of.
Accessible online.
And because you mentioned the town clerk, and it's a little off-topic, I did want to mention I was searching our website the other day, and I noted that what a great job the town clerk had done on that section of the town's website. So if you go under Town Clerk, there's tons of information. And it really is a model for other departments, I think, to look at because, you know, sometime when you have a templated website, as we do, people think you can't do anything with it. But he, he really set the, set the bar high of how you can do that. And I know that's off-topic, but you mentioned town clerk and it made me think about, so thank you for indulging that, yes.
I just wanted to recognize our former counselor and Chair Sean Sullivan, who this topic was near and dear to his heart. Dollar amount is the same. He wanted to spend $2,000 to $4,000 to index other documents in the town. And this has been a long-running conversation. We want to find something. Everything's in PDF, it may be online, but it's in PDF, you can't find it. And that's why we have this IQM2 system. It's why we're doing all of the scanning so we can get the paper out of here and people can find the information they want. So it's great.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Would somebody like to make this next motion?
I will.
Go ahead.
I move to assign the Police Headquarters Facility project to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee to oversee and manage the project to completion.
Second.
This is just slightly different than when we made the motion to send the project to them and hire an architect. This now is saying, we've got it approved, go forward, make it happen. Any questions or discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Mr. McIntyre, it is yours.
Thank you.
Discussion, work session issues as time permits. The only thing I'd like to mention here is that I had mentioned to Counselor Saons that a couple of years ago, we, it was Chairman Jones put together this chart, and I'm not going to go over this whole chart, because we were having some debate about kind of getting some projects completed. And so he put this chart together and every, every one of our committees had some tasks, the Library Commission, the mayor's office, WPCA, Public Safety, Land Use, all of the committees. And Bill and I were just sitting here checking off many of the things that we have accomplished since this was put together. And it's actually pretty, you know, impressive, the combining planning and zoning, looking at the town manager, the Land Use Department, the blight ordinance, maintain a list of town-owned properties, establish a pension board, you know, many, many things that we did accomplish. So we've certainly done a lot of work in the last several years. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. It was kind of nice to look at. I don't know why this, I found this in something that I was going through. So, does anybody have anything else to bring up for the good of the group?
If we just mentioned this bison wings sign, would we break the record for shortest town?
Oh, no, we did that last meeting.
All right. So, as Counselor Nebraska mentioned, I will keep it short. Land Use Planning did have a discussion with Director Maslin about bicycling. It's a state law that you must give bicyclists three feet when you pass them. So we had more discussion about it. We got a photograph of the sign that was proposed by resident Jim Smith, and we forwarded that to the director. So we're hoping to move that along, find a location, actually post some signs in town, just to make the residents aware that you have to give bicyclists a little bit of room when you pass them, you've got narrow roads, it's dangerous. And this is something that a lot of people bike to work.
Yes.
A lot of people bike for pleasure and for exercise, and I think it's pretty important. Most people don't know that the bicyclist has the right of way on the road. You have to get around them, you can't just, you know, force them off the road when you want to pass. So it's not a free ride. So we're moving forward.
Very good. Roxanne, would you call, oh, I'm sorry.
We'll do it, Jerry.
Sorry.
There we go.
Sorry.
Now, Roxanne, sorry. Oh, that's right. Sorry.